We're going to go ahead and start the hearing. So we're going to go ahead and open the meeting of the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals. And my name is David Blumberg. And Sarah Northrup is a board member. And Elizabeth Silver and Bob Riddle are associate members. And do you know who's... well, we'll do one thing at a time. And then Carolyn Mitchell's here from the Office of Planning and Sustainability to support the board. We have three matters on today. We'll first open by asking if there's any public, anyone here just for open public comment that does not relate to one of the applications before us tonight. Seeing nobody, we'll dispense with public comment. The first matter is a, before us is the application for a commercial finding for Lori Paparello and Ellie Sheldon, Northampton Veterinary Clinic, to convert non-conforming medical office use to veterinary use at 199 Attax Street, Florence Map ID 23-291. I have multiple conflicts here, including the fact that I'm representing one of the parties to this transaction. So I am going to recuse myself and go away and hand the invisible gavel to Sarah Northrup to hear this application, the 5:30 application. And then I'll come back for the next... there it is. There really is a gavel. The next two... so Sarah, I'll let you go ahead and open the hearing on the first application.
Are you leaving the room?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be in the hall.
All right, outside, it's so beautiful.
Yeah, that's good, I do.
Okay. I'll do a code. Linda, come back. Welcome, I'm Sarah Northrup, opening the hearing for a commercial finding. As previously stated, is the applicant here?
We are.
Hi.
Hi.
Would you come to the podium, use your name and address, and present your case? We have your information that was forwarded to us by...
Oh, yeah, I'm Lori Paparello. And this is Ellie Sheldon. We're the owners of Northampton Veterinary Clinic at 227 South Street in Northampton. And we're interested in...
Can I take you so I can hear? Sure.
We're interested in purchasing two of the condos that are currently utilized in one space at 199 Attax, currently the internal medicine specialist group there. And you have our application?
Yes.
I think it mostly speaks for itself. We think that the use of this space will be very, very similar in that they're a medical facility and we're a medical facility. Obviously, our patients are animals. So we've already spoken with the other condo units there about that fact, and they are amenable to us joining the condo association. We will put up a small area of fencing as a safety issue for us so that we can walk our patients safely. But it'll be limited to the area around our building. And we'll certainly have our staff members very attentive to the animal waste that comes along with our patients. It certainly helps us to have a clean and pleasant environment as we have at our current veterinary hospital on South Street. There will be some remodeling that will happen in order to convert some of this space, just slightly more open space, because we do need to make room for more of the hospital-type functions that our practice requires, that the internal medicine folks do normally in their practice. But beyond that, we anticipate that the use will be very similar in terms of patient flow and appointments and things of that nature. Yeah, no, I don't think we're bringing in any new hazards or anything like that into the mix. We've got a really nice buffer with the neighbors. It's a lot larger buffer than our current buffer. And we really haven't had any trouble with our neighbors in difference with the next door neighbors there. So we're hoping for us to do an easy transition.
This is an expansion, I mean a total move, not an expansion, right?
It's most likely a total... That's our... is this an appropriate one to ask about that? Can I ask something about that?
I don't know, we could answer it.
We could answer that.
Yeah, our...
It's kind of a general question. So we haven't decided, this fell upon us. We were looking, we were out through our building. And our building is hard to play its square footage, but it's up, so we can't move off of the parking lot in terms of our ability to expand. So we really were looking to just sort of do a satellite clinic. And we fell upon this, which is at a very good price and a much better layout for the flow. So we can go for four exam rooms, seven exam rooms, and have space for pets to sit down, and parking for our clients, and food to sell, and that kind of thing. So from a, just a flow, we are going to move the entire clinic there. We hadn't decided what to do, whether we should do a satellite clinic. And our current space is originally a veterinary clinic. And it's been there for, since the '50s as a veterinary clinic. And it makes us sad to lose it. But financially, I'm not sure that we can maintain it as a satellite, whether we have enough to find itself for that, probably not. So my question in general is, is it possible to take a finding for lesser use for that before we sell it, if we sell it?
That is something that you would, I would say, come talk to Carolyn about that. Or just the building inspector.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Right, okay. We're trying to...
It's pretty tricky for us to market exactly.
It's very hard to market, because it's, you know, it's a beautiful house, but it's a veterinary clinic. And we can't sell to another veterinary clinic. So, but yes, the plan right now is to move the entire clinic to 199 Attax, assuming the due diligence goes through.
Thank you. Any comments from DPW or anything like that?
DPW didn't have any concerns.
No ones from Board of Health or anything like that?
We don't send to Board of Health, but if they need licenses, whatever they do, I mean, it's a center process.
Any questions, Bob?
Are you going to have kennels or anything like that?
No boarding and no real kennels. I mean, there's space, cages space, but we typically... It will be the same amount of space that we have in our facility, just small cages for our patients, and then a couple larger ones for big patients.
Any comments from the public? Please speak your name and...
Am I okay right there?
Sure.
Maureen Scanlon. I'm in a letter, I live at 197 Attax, which is a kitty corner across the street. And I'm also here on behalf of Louise and Michael Martin Delk, who are at 192, I guess, they're right next door. Just, I tried to look up the application online and I wasn't able to. So forgive me if this is all information you provided.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
I didn't know you had a current location, so I don't know anything about your business. But we're interested in, and I'm particularly interested in, what part of the building, how much of the building, and the ways it will impact our, the neighborhood. You know, we look, I guess, lighting, parking, traffic, sounds, hours of operation. Those were questions that I think probably are pretty easy for you to answer.
Yeah.
And then the other question I have is, I know it's a non-conforming, which is why there's even a hearing on this. The building is a pre-existing non-conforming, is that the case?
It's in the industrial zone. We don't allow medical office uses in the industrial zone. So it's a request to move from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. But there are a lot of medical offices in the building.
But it's mixed-use industrial, it's not just industrial, it's in the neighborhood, correct?
No, it's actually just that parcel and then wraps around to the, along Riverside, is also industrial.
Oh, really?
So it's connected sort of in the back, so it's a... But then the rest, then the residential homes, for the most part, are zoned residential. It just happens to be this building plus sort of looping back to the side.
Oh, that's interesting. I always assumed, because it was built where there had been a farm, that it was residential and mixed-use, but in a sense, who did it?
The history of it, I think, was Riverside Industries, which is the manufacturing...
Yeah, familiar with it.
That's where it started. And then there was some problem that made them, like some big financial problem that made them have to leave. And then in the '70s, the doctors would have been, and I guess they've been non-conforming, they never brought us out of the permit for it, because it was industrial. But it's been a doctor's office since. And you're looking at the, do you know where the Northampton Internal Medicine?
Yes.
That's where it was.
So the, like, the front south corner, southeast corner.
Southeast corner.
From the street, exactly, for the back.
Doctor's office is still for sale.
It's right, the main entrance is on the side, side of that.
And in terms of impact, I mean, obviously, I think that they said they were up to seven doctors at some point, you know, in terms of their flow. And we're at four and a half equivalent. So it should be similar, but obviously, dog patients, so they may be out in that area walking around with dogs.
Where on the site were you fence-offed?
Very small. So there's a side-back entrance where we're just taking out hospitalized patients. So that's not where clients would go. That would be where we would go when we have to just take them out. So we won't be, like, doing much of the walking around. We don't want our patients to get loose. But I'm certain that clients will be walking around there. So we will certainly have, you know, cleanup stations and have people going out to clean up. We currently on South Street, so in a much more, we're in a much more residential neighborhood here. We've had no problems.
Our nearest neighbor is...
Right next door.
Yeah, closest to that shed. And in fact, I spoke to him today, just to give him an FYI. He teared up and said we'll pay to see him as well.
So we've been good neighbors for...
Hours of operation, were you not fully weekdays generally?
We are open on Saturdays for a half a day currently. And we actually have one Sunday a month where we have a cat only, four hours period. And then we're eight to six.
Not evenings, it's not like an animal hospital?
It is not a... No, we're not going for it to be a emergency clinic.
And no thoughts about going in that direction?
There's a really good one in South Jersey, so we are interested in that. That takes a whole different...
Generally, house cats?
No.
Exotic animals, no elephants?
Nope.
Versus cows.
Dogs, dogs and cats.
Dogs and cats and rabbits and dogs.
Rare, rare little pet creatures.
So would you have dogs sometimes?
Dogs are, you know, the biggest concern. And it's even more of a concern, really, obviously, with the condo association. Because we've got an actor company, a dentist. And so noise control would be very critical. I don't think you'll have any noise issues at all within the building. It's concrete walls that are really thick. You know, we're more concerned because the walls are necessarily reach to the ceiling. So we're going to make sure there's noise control to the neighbors within the condo. The only time you would hear dogs would be if they're, if our clients are walking them outside. They bark at each other. Probably not much different than dogs walking down the street.
And there's no, thank you, there's no conditions that we set when the non-conforming building permit is granted that might be a question now?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any record of anything, the medical office use. I don't know how long it was there previously. But even so, it doesn't necessarily carry forward automatically to the next use. The board would have to determine if it made sense to place any conditions on this applicant or any future applicant relative to any issues that might arise.
We have been told as neighbors, and it's probably made a gentleman's agreement, that we could assume, that we could expect to not have activities at night work, for example. It wouldn't be night work.
I don't know any, I don't know any conditions relative to that. It's industrial, and a lot of industrial uses are 24/7. So, you know, the fact that they mostly don't have 24/7 operations is great for the neighborhood. But there's certainly no condition, because it is zoned for industrial. So if everyone moved out and an industrial user came in outright, they could be running 24/7.
Okay, that is an interesting question, Sarah.
Thank you. I'm going to just read, in general, our purview, our goal for zoning is pretty narrow. So the request is for a finding to determine whether a change from one non-conforming use to another is not substantially more detrimental to the district than the existing non-comformity. Any other comments or questions from the public, or against? Thank you. Any from the board? We have a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Close the public hearing. And does anyone want to form a motion or discuss?
Do you need to discuss that?
No.
I am making a motion that we do a petition to convert the medical medical use to non-conformity. I'm not saying this move is not pursued.
All in favor? Move.
So now there's a twenty-day period.
Yes.
So once the permit gets issued, so it's going to take me a couple days probably to get it to the clerk's office, that will start the clock. You'll get the notice of the decision that'll have the appeal deadline date. So that's the day after that, the day after the deadline, you can go to the city clerk's office and pick up the decision and report it.
And you have to do it most very fast.
No.
Thank you. I wrap loudly.
Would you just send Attorney Blumberg with me?
Sure, yeah, sure.
I relinquish the chair to Chair Blumberg.
Thank you. So it's after 5:45, so we can hear the second item on the agenda. And that's a commercial finding for buffer setback for New England Urban Senior Living LLC for new construction, sixty-two-year-old residential building with nine thousand square feet of ground floor, commercial use and associated parking structure at 10 Holly Street, Northampton, ID 32A, 170, 171, and 197. By the way, notice of this hearing is published on April 28th and May 5th. And I'll ask for this, really for all applications, that we'll first hear from the representative of the applicant. And then after that, the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. And then after that, we will open it up so that people who are here, who would like to address this application, will have an opportunity to do so. We ask that all questions be directed to the board, not to the applicant or to each other. And for everyone who speaks, we ask that you give your name and address just for the record that Carolyn is keeping of the hearing.
Yeah, and then I would just, to clarify, this is a hearing about the fact that there's this separate parking lot, which I think the applicants will go over, that does not meet the minimum buffer requirements to the residential district. Because part of the parking lot is in the central business district, but the parking lot goes all the way over. And as you may know from your site visit, or certainly residents know, there's not much landscaping to that parking lot, and we require that in zoning. So the request is really just focused on that one separate parking lot and the changes that are being proposed for the landscape buffer. So the board's role is to determine if the change of use, and therefore the landscape plan is, you have to find it under the finding that it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-compliant landscape buffer.
The change of the use of the parking lot.
Right, from the physical changes to the parking lot that will support the new use on the other side.
We're not doing anything with respect to the new use.
Right, so the issue of the change of use of the buildings is not within the jurisdiction. Now, will the planning board be hearing?
Tonight.
Okay, so just, I think for the edification of people who are here, later tonight, there's a planning board hearing. And it's within the jurisdiction of the planning board to address issues relating to the buildings.
And the use of the whole complex.
And the use of the entire complex. The only issue before this board has to do with the alteration of the parking. And that is for a finding. Okay, with that preface, we'll ask the applicants to please introduce yourselves and give us a brief description of your application, please.
We're working on it.
Okay, working on that. Okay.
It's getting quite some reading glasses in there.
No, but they might still be there.
That's a technical difficulty. It's out there, you can't...
I've got some, one and a half, so if you want to borrow.
I think we've got, once he gets it open, we'll be okay here. In any way, I'm Dave Sanders, HBD Cambridge, from Webster Roads Group. Our company began doing senior housing probably forty years ago. But thirty-five years ago, we invented something called urban senior living, which was to turn and create a pedestrian friendly campus where they can act independently, do things they want to do when they want to do them, rather than being hustled from the woods to downtown. This is my disentate, young party owner, has his property under contract. Together, we are working our way through this extension. Is that it? How do we get full screen here?
Well, you want to, is that a PowerPoint?
Yes.
So you need to just start from the beginning of the slideshow? Just go to the slideshow field, and then from the beginning?
So as I believe was explained as I was doing that, we're here focused mostly on a half, half, I guess, approximately half of an existing parking lot that is at the corner of Holly and Phillips. While no parking is specifically required for anything we're proposing doing on the site, we intend to park all of our cars for the senior housing on our property. And we intend to provide parking for all of the proposed retail restaurant use on this particular lot that we're going to look at here. I'm going to go, I'm going to be skipping a few slides here because there is a...
Thank you.
If you want to go back to them, if we can.
Thank you.
Yes, because it's time is short. This is a Google map, obviously, a photo of the site. That's pointing mechanism set up last night.
Plus, we already have that.
So where the drive comes in right there is, you know, more or less where the Central Business District line stops, right about there. And so the back half of that lot... Good, thank you. So that line is kind of right, right about here. So this back section right here is in residential district, not in the CBD. These are kind of poses of existing condition. There's a curb cut off of Phillips, on Phillips, and there's one on Holly. This is the Phillips entrance. That will remain. I'm sure we will make it look much better than it looks in this photo. It's going to be narrowed slightly. It'll come in at pretty much on the same curb cut location. However, we have discussed and provided information that existing granted curbing hurdles and standards that we've met there. There is also then an entrance off of Holly, pretty wide entrance actually. That one will be closed. Sidewalk will be replaced. I believe we talked about a six-foot sidewalk along Holly. And then on the other side of the property line, sorry, that blue car sitting there just past the sidewalk, there will be a ten-foot landscape buffer across there, which will be designed as a kind of a filter swale. All that water will sheet feed down toward the sidewalk and sit in there, contains some water, reduce some after a while, infiltrate before it goes into the system. You can see from that little map up on the left side there where the central business district stops, and the yellow chick there is supporting this in residential district. There are homes in those yellow areas, let's see, to the east of us, then at the end of that lot, and also to the south of us, that lot line where it says URC, there's a home in there. One of the things that's, I think, a good starting place on this particular lot that you saw maybe on the Google map, but you'll see if I think some more in a minute. A lot of very large existing trees, all of which should be able to stay. This time of year, when they're all leafed out, it's a pretty dense buffer. But we will be adding significantly to that. These are in to give you an idea that one in the lower left is that sort of planted swale at the bottom of the parking lot to filter water. That's really in the CBD against the sidewalk. One on the lower right is our standard kind of combination, privacy fence, six feet, with evergreen or deciduous trees, and interspersed in between deciduous shrubs against the fence and lower planting in the foreground. So quite a bit of additional planting will occur around the residential boundary throughout the parking lot. This shows that landscape plan. The glasses aren't here, but I'm pretty sure it also represents somewhere the location of some of the existing trees from the survey. And as I said, there are quite a few. This drawing, I think, is helpful in that it shows the before and the after. The shaded area there that you see is the boundary of the existing pavement. So the lot is shrinking in its overall size. Roughly the same number of cars, I'm not sure why they gave it the way they did. But it lays out pretty well. We gave up the parking spaces to get the ten-foot playing buffer in front. But the setbacks from the lot line increase on all sides. They increase on Phillips, Holly, and the other two sides as well, pretty significantly. And in the lower right-hand corner of that lot in the back, you see that dark shaded rectangle there. The present condition has the lot quite close to the lot line and a house adjacent that's pretty close. And that is one place where the existing trees kind of leave a little gap. So we reversed that and increased the setback there to the largest dimension we could get it to. That's why that square is there. And then it's larger all the way across as well. And then, of course, with the fence and the new planting, I think we can plug that, that one gap. Let's see, all right, let me... Well, you see some trees there. But the trees I'm talking about there, if you look at those trees in the background, they're big. There's no evergreen in there, and we will probably utilize some of that so that the effectiveness of leaves are with us year-round. The fence will be there, obviously, all the time. But those, all those trees, as far as these help moment, can remain and will have more access to water absorption if their root systems, because the pavement's going to go out, if it goes back. You can see in that area the same thing. There's pikey trees on the south and the east. A little bit of exposure for that house on the east up there on the top to the corner of existing, of the existing. So I can answer the question.
To, I just clarified, so that right now, there's a curb cut on Holly and two on Phillips?
Well, uh, the one in this, uh, let's see, corner up there, this is the Phillips street.
Yes.
The Holly one's kind of hidden by the tree, but it's right there.
Yeah.
You're getting rid of the Holly.
Getting rid of the big Holly one and all of our, this is parking lot, as I said, that we use for the restaurant patrons and for a little bit of new retail that we're adding. All of our resident parking is on the other side of the street where there's another existing parking lot where the social center is. That's going to accommodate all of our resident car and will be covered and have a green roof over it, so it's not very visible and very contained, but this will be public parking.
And, um, giving up the curb cut on Holly because of traffic safety, getting away from that intersection a little bit?
Well, three reasons, I don't see that we saw that we need to. Second reason, the city doesn't want them there anymore. They can get, uh, contiguous, continuous sidewalk, uh, moments. And I think the green buffer along there will dress that up for all of us. Helps with our drainage and our, uh, outflow of water, cleaning the water. Those are objectives we've been all working on.
Very good. Is that, uh, the rain guards and swale, is that all on the, on, on your parcel? Or does that cross on to the...
I believe our, that ten foot setback starts at our property line goes into the property, so it's all on the parcel. There may be a sliver that's there. You know, widening the sidewalk to six feet is gonna narrow the, the city's, um, street tree, green space by a bit. Uh, but we're planning on meeting all the street tree requirements up and down the property.
Okay. Thank you.
And, um, bear in mind that the only issue before this board is whether the changes you propose to make to this parking lot will result in new conditions that are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Well, or less, I mean, where the standard we have to apply is we have to make a determination that, that the changes you are making will not be, will not be more detrimental to the, to the characteristics of the neighborhood. So you're reducing impervious surface?
Yes.
Because you're reducing paved area? And you're improving drainage because of the added green buffers and the swales? And, um, you're eliminating a second hazardous curb cut on Holly? And, um, you're adding more plantings? There's a very slight reduction in the number of parking spaces, not an increase, correct?
We're going from, um, glasses here, uh, we're going from eighty-seven percent impervious site review down to seventy-one. And you saw on that shaded gray, white drawing, go back to all around the perimeter, all that gray, you saw was the reduction of pavement coming back to the supposed lot.
Right.
So it, it does, every single, on every single side, it increases the setback from the lot line to parking lot.
And tonight at the planning board, I assume you'll be addressing issues relating to increasing traffic and, and perhaps the fact that everybody going in and out of that parking lot will now be doing it on Phillips place instead of having the second option of Holly, but that's tonight at the planning board.
Tonight.
And the use, the change in use and the added intensity of use and the possible alterations to the characteristics of the neighborhood from the change of use is before the planning board tonight.
Yes, and if, if you had more than fifteen minutes, I'd explain why that, those things aren't gonna happen, but I won't.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's literally not within our jurisdiction. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I just want to clarify, um, the, uh, the application checks on your special permit, but we're doing a finding, um, not a special permit.
Right.
So, uh, I guess we'll, if, if there's no more now, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to questions that other people asked, but if, oh, I know what I was gonna ask, lighting. Is there anything changing or being added in terms of lighting that could...
Well, that's a good one.
Overflow off-site affecting the surrounding neighborhood?
I think that's a very good one. We, we drove around there again yesterday and I noticed, uh, way more than I even realized were there. For some unknown reason, every light that was put up on this property, full set of streets, the back parking lot, the drive along the driveways and the mid slot are placed on the property line, right on the property line, extremely close to people's bedroom windows. They have no downlight, cut-off characteristics whatsoever, they're just glowing balls up there. So we will be lighting, uh, for safety. Our residents are seniors, so in their parking area we'll get an adequate lighting, but we're going to encapsulate it under this green roof so it can't spill out to the neighbors. And on this property, people will have shut off pictures that put the light down where people are getting out of their car and that's across the lot line. And, and planning board will be quizzing us probably extensively on all of that.
Right, for compliance with the dark sky restrictions and so on. And then what about signage? Is the parking lot going to have any signage?
Well, you know, sign, we, we've done these over and over everywhere across the country. There's a, if there's a signage standard, we have to design it to it, and we will. And only if there's some incredibly unusual need that we see, we'll come forward and say as a way to get around some with a fair that we think should be, should be considered. We've never had trouble doing that, signage standards are good things, they avoid chaos and overdoing of advertising and all sorts of things. But we do have to let people know that, that this department community, uh, is here and how to reach its main entrance drive and who should park in that visitor lot and, uh, who should use the service drive, uh, for deliveries.
But I'm just talking about signage for this parking lot, because this is the only one of us.
Yes, it'll have some sign on it somewhere, I hope, that says, uh, visitor parking, restaurant visitors, self-parking.
So that would be part of the planning board's review?
Um, it would be, but there's some, um, there are some allowances by right for uses, so if... They're not gonna look at it tonight because, um, the specific details of the signs haven't been worked out yet. But at the time that they're ready to install signs, they'll apply to the building department. Staff would evaluate it and then make a determination whether or not it was a by right allowance or if it got kicked up to the board, so the board for review.
So that could come back, if it weren't allowed as, if the requested signage were not allowed as of right, it would come back here for a special permit for additional signage.
Right.
But for our purposes, this issue of whether the changes will be substantially more detrimental, that's why I was curious about if there were gonna be any lit, you know, illuminated signs or anything like that on this parking lot, because this parking lot is the only thing in front of us.
Well, as I said, the only thing I think we want, and I think the neighbors probably want it, I would say as well, we're trying very hard to be sure that the impact of this project, uh, parking wise at least stays on our property. There are a lot of cars that park on Phillips to access downtown. There's some workbooks that have to live with that in snow conditions and other circumstances that arise. We don't want to add to that problem. So the only sign we're gonna ask for is something that hopefully will cause people to read signs, and everybody doesn't, to go to this lot and park their car there and not park it on the street. We don't want to get that mess through somehow, and I'm sure the sign adjournments would figure out a way to do that probably when we get to that stuff.
All right. Any other questions from the board? So we'll, we'll open this up to anybody who is here, uh, who would like to address this application or is looking for more information about this application. Or maybe people are just here to gather information, at least at this hearing. But does anybody, would anybody else like to speak, yes, sir?
Should I come up here?
Sure, please, and if you could just give your name and address or the, the record.
Jim Nash, eighteen Montpel. And, um, so I, I'm curious as to, um, I mean, overall with, with the parking lot design, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. Is it, my, my concern is by keeping the curb cut on Phillips, where rather than, um, the one on Holly, Holly's a commercial street in my mind, has lots of commercial buildings. And that what we're talking about is a restaurant, a commercial operation. And that, you know, I would think that, um, having the curb cut on Holly would make more sense. It wouldn't be attracting more cars onto Phillips place, a residential street. Once, once I, you know, if I went to that parking lot, I'd be taking a right to go to my house, you know, up Phillips. If, if that curb cut were on, uh, Holly Street, I'd be taking a left to go to my house and I wouldn't be on Phillips. So the customers, visitors during the day are going to be on Holly, uh, on Phillips instead of Holly by, by this choice.
Maybe we can ask if the applicant or Carolyn might have some input on that too, but first the applicant or...
Actually, let Carolyn go.
Okay. Do you have any sort of...
Um, I mean, yeah, I think, um, from a traffic standpoint, eliminating the conflict that close to the intersection of Phillips and Holly, but with that curb cut, um, is an improvement for pedestrian safety for other users on Holly Street. I think the people who will be accessing the site will come up just a little ways on Phillips place and access that driveway and then go back to Holly Street when they're exiting. But it's a safer condition for the street that has the heavier traffic that close to the intersection to close that curb cut and for pedestrians along the sidewalk using that sidewalk on that side.
Yeah, I think, um, directly across the street from that curb cut is, uh, where those other trees are. By the way, on that, on the side of the street that the parking lot is, there is posted currently no parking, so, um, a bit of pretty clear lane, uh, available there as long as someone's not parking illegally.
On Phillips?
On Phillips. One of the residents that we met, we met twice with the neighbors and tried to, you know, talk through a lot of these issues before the city ever saw our plan. And, uh, the reality for our purposes, it would be okay if somebody driving and parking that lot from either street, it probably wouldn't matter functionally much to us because it's just going to the restaurant and it's fun. But there were some city, uh, planning guidelines, expectations and goals relative to sidewalk treatments, getting rid of all these curb cut interruptions that break that up. Being able to provide this, uh, the swale that we're talking about that would collect water, filter it before it goes in sewer, was for the most part go away if that curb cut stayed on Holly. Uh, you can't really drain the Phillips, it doesn't work. So we could probably live with it either way, but I think the, you know, the ball's kind of near. But I do think that the traffic it will generate won't affect people up Phillips much. I think ninety percent of it's gonna come in and turn the parking lot and go back out the same way they came. And, and we would do everything we could to encourage that, but...
I just wanted to comment that, you know, I think in overall in the, the project already is attracting more drivers to the, the residence and also for any of the services. And then to add customers to Phillips as well, I, I think that's a big ask. And we have a commercial corridor, that's where the traffic should be. And that's, that would be my opinion. The, the other thing I'm curious about is, um, the, there, along Phillips, we're, we're doing improvements, but there's no plans for, for a sidewalk. So I'm curious about that. And does that get covered here? Do I take that to the planning board instead or...
The planning board's gonna be doing an entire site review with it.
Okay, so, but the curb cut question is for you guys.
Okay, well, it's not that the curb cut question specifically is for us. We are asked to apply the standard, will these changes, overall, all of the changes taken into consideration, compared to the existing condition, lead to a result that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? So I think we also have to weigh the, the other improvements that, that are kind of, quite frankly, pretty obvious in terms of reducing improved pervious surface, including increasing green buffers, the swale, improving drainage concerns onto Holly Street. Against the point that, I think the valid point you raised that, you know, isn't it, doesn't it make more sense to have commercial traffic coming in and out of Holly than going onto a residential street on Phillips? Although it is, I, I, I do, uh, tend to agree that we're talking about just a, a stretch up Phillips that doesn't have houses on either side and then you go in and out of that, that parking lot, but, uh...
It's kind of sixty feet of Holly, I mean, of Phillips, but on the sidewalk issue, we actually, uh, drew one in on that side of the street. We took it back out, but we realized it was a sidewalk to nowhere. There's a sidewalk on the other side, but there is no sidewalk whatsoever that we could find going down that side. If there was a plan in place or in the works or contemplated to do something, you know, in the future, I guess we wouldn't have a problem with one there.
Yeah, I, the plan, I mean, this is all planning board issues, though, the curb cuts, multiple curb cuts.
So that'll, that'll can be discussed tonight.
The planning board regularly requires applicants to have sign blocks on the property, even if in the instant that it's decision is made, it appears it doesn't go anywhere because there's always a future possibility for correction.
And other speakers, yes?
Marie Wector, thirty-six Phillips Place, and, um, I, I personally would prefer to see the curb cut on Holly because as it is now, traffic patterns in downtown North Hampton, if people come out of a restaurant and have an option to go right onto Phillips place to get out of town and would not, they're gonna take that, and that's where we've seen increased traffic already. And especially since the main entrance is on Phillips place, so residential parking inflow from the project is already flowing that way. So if we keep the commercial traffic coming up of Holly, it would help maintain the residential nature of that, of that area.
All right, thank you. I have a question for Carolyn. Is, is the curb cut on Holly is also on the table tonight with planning board, is every... So it's, it, that's on the table again tonight, it's this, what we decide here does not put an end to that issue because the whole development is before the planning board.
Buffer is...
See, they're not actually...
And only for this parking lot in general, right? I'm not getting a variance from that.
Actually, no, he's not whole parking lot, it's just the back half of it.
It's just, it's just ambiguous on the meeting notice.
I see. Any other, anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak to us about the issues before us? Well, I mean, you can speak about anything at all relevant, but you, I haven't made it obvious. Um, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Linda Confort from twenty-two Butler Place, which is the next street over. But I have done research for years and watched where people parked on Phillips place and I thank God they weren't on Butler Place, although some of them were. And I would follow them, because I wanted to get my walking in, I would follow them and see where they went. I told our city councillor, who's now retired from, that I told him about what I witnessed. I would follow the people who would come, park on Phillips place and walk all the way up to the buildings on South Street, the old schools. Walk all that way to be able to park. And many of them would have briefcases, I watched people go into Fitzwillies building, but I think, again, they weren't going to Fitzwillies, they were going in to offices. Many people parked on Butler Place as well. They'll leave barking dogs in the car, I mean, it's become quite a problem. That isn't the only problem, though. On that corner, when you're coming off of Bridge Street and you're coming down Holly Street and right before you take your left to go Phillips place, there's a corner right there. And there is no signage that says you can't park there. It's the most dangerous place I've ever witnessed.
Visibility for...
Well, because those big trucks come, the signage, I've been away for six months, but I'm assuming everything's still the same. The signage directs them down because, uh, big truck drivers have gotten stuck there. And I happened to be there and I tried to help them.
It's the diversion truck.
One, one truck driver actually, he was coming from, and I sort of forgot because it's six months ago, but there was a hole, there was construction on Phillips place, it was a hole. And there was one of those big, uh, orange cones, a huge one though. He would get out of his truck, move the orange cone off to the side, get back in his truck and go further, then come back out, get that big barrel and put it back to cover the hole. That went on for months. I couldn't, I just couldn't understand it. And so then you come down with that big truck and you have to make that corner of Phillips place, because that's what the sign is telling you to do. And you've got those cars parked on the corner, like maybe only two or three, but they're always there. Is everyone aware of that problem?
Well, but, but the question we were asked to answer is, will this parking lot be better or worse with these improvements that are proposed? The issues about traffic in the neighborhood and increased use and so on is, is relates to the larger application pending for the planning.
And that's at seven?
That's at seven.
No, exactly, it's fortunate we're at nine, so get some sleep.
But I also agree with Marie and this other fellow, uh, that the curb cut on Holly would be much preferable to the curb cut on Phillips place. They have way too much traffic there, I've watched it for thirty-five years, it's unbelievable. And so I think what this fellow said, this is the commercial corridor and that's where it should be. And I walk there almost every day, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? So it's really just about how the trees look?
Yes.
They look good.
And the reduction in pervious.
They look better.
They're reducing, they're reducing paved area. They're increasing drainage and swales. It's about more than the way the trees look. In my view, it's about more than, I think there may be larger issues that people will want to have addressed by the planning board, but that's not, those are not our issues. And I, it's not just punting, we're just following the guidelines that we volunteered as fellow neighbors to follow as members of the zoning board.
And we, from the few meetings we've had, we're more in this neighborhood with the variety of folks and lots come up to one here tonight. We're very, very aware of this parking issue, we're very aware of the traffic. We are concerned about the congestion at that intersection in terms of emergency vehicles getting to properties, ours or others. Somebody gave us a very scary picture from the winter of 2015 that showed that intersection with cars parked probably illegally on both sides of the street down Phillips. You close that curb cut that you park on all the way to the corner. And then the snow, you know, five feet of snow on top of it all, and you sort of said, how could any service vehicle make it through there? We're real aware of it. We don't want to make it worse and make decisions that will try not to make traffic or parking worse.
Was there somebody else who, did I see a hand? Anyone else want to speak or ask questions? Any other questions for board members? So, I guess then the question is, do we want to have a motion to close the public hearing on this application, after which we could not take any more input from the public or the applicant? Oh, who's voting? Okay, so we've all heard the application, but the three people voting will be Elizabeth, Sarah and me. Okay, second. All in favor, unanimous? And we could either have discussion and then a motion, or a motion and discussion, or a motion not voted.
Well, I'd like to just note, as someone who, a tree hugger who designs parking lots almost every day, I note that it's a decent design. I like it that it's got the rain garden and dealing with the stormwater, which is, it's not just an existing problem, it's a problem that's getting worse with weather and regulatory conditions. And moving the traffic away from that intersection is, is a public safety issue. I would like to have seen just moving that entrance back, you know, towards the south. And then you have this fourteen-inch beech tree, and who's going to want to cut that down? So that's just my little bit of input. But as far as the buffers, they're carefully and nicely thought out for advantage of URC Zone.
My reaction is that setting aside the larger issues which are, you know, to be heard by the, by the planning board, and by the way, if I lived in this neighborhood, I'd have very serious concerns about the change of, not from this parking lot, though, but the effect of the change of use, but that's, that's for the planning board discussion. Given the fact that we're just looking at the parking lot, I find it pretty hard not to conclude that the proposed improvements will result in a redesign, not a redesign, but a, but changes to the, to the overall layout and details of the parking lot that can only be considered improvements. I just, I just don't see how you look at it otherwise. Yes, there's a question about the curb cut on Holly, but the city planners are telling us that there are important safety reasons why it's better to close off that curb cut. And the people who have a concern with that will get another bite at that apple in front of the planning board. But just looking at the before and after pictures here, I don't see how we couldn't conclude that not only will it not be, remember, the standard isn't even, is it better? Is it not substantially more detrimental? It's not even, the standard isn't even, does this make it better? Although I think it does. Is it not substantially more detrimental? And I really don't see how overall with this redesign, you could argue that the end result is substantially more detrimental. Whether the change in use of the other buildings, that, the effect, that may have different issue, but not our issue. Any other thoughts before we?
Not in terms of, not in terms of this finding for the.
So no, no concerns or objections or recommended conditions by DPW?
Right.
Okay, so I guess we'll, a motion to, a motion on the application.
I move that we, we're gonna grant the finding for, thank you, the commercial finding for buffer setback, and we're going to see what y'all see, construction, et cetera, regarding the parking lot. I'm not going to be talking about the other structures, et cetera. MAP ID thirty-three A, in this case, doesn't say exactly which lot I'm talking about. One thirty-seven, one ninety-seven, and one seventy?
One seventy, one seventy-one and one ninety-seven.
I'm just checking, I think one seventy-one is, in any case, the application as presented. Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one other matter, which was supposed to be at six o'clock. The, there was a request for a dimensional variance for two flag lots by Neil Perry-Hunsted at four oh eight North Hunter Road, Florence, meant by D seven dash eleven, and I understand you're going to request for.
Correct. Representative Hunsted, I wanted them to be here, request of the variance, when they have unavoidable conflict, so I, I'll continue and to the first day of the date of June.
Well.
Good to you.
How you doing?
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Excited.
I'm doing nice.
Jim Weller.
And then we'll have a fighting here.
We don't have anything.
So we could say five thirty for them. That works. Five thirty here, June. Okay, good. I guess we've got a motion to grant it. No, great.
I've got, I've got no rules to go for a couple hours, except maybe they could match somewhere.
Okay, great. And then two minutes. So, yeah, just want to. All in favor of that?